Okay, Jeff, you're first on the agenda.
Uh, I think I had two things. One was the, um, we took some stuff out to the recycle center and they wanted to charge us. And I guess I don't have an issue with that. Um, I don't, I don't know if we should or shouldn't. Seems kind of passing one mu- one hand to the other, so I'll let you guys make the decision. If you, uh, before it was always you could, it was county business, you took it out there and got rid of it, you didn't pay. Well, uh, run into a lady out there that wanted to pay, so we got a receipt. I said I'd go to the commissioner's.
Yeah, I think the County Highway has, has always had to pay. Is that correct, Gary?
Not always.
Always, some. But like you say, it's one hand goes into the other, so.
Yeah, it, I, I guess it doesn't matter to me, but the, um, I, I don't know, I just, I just thought it was kind of crazy. I, I'll let you guys decide. If you want to pay, we'll pay. If you don't, then.
Yep.
Kind of a no win situation.
Well, I guess that's something that we can, uh, address with John about, but as you say, it's other inner departments paying each other also, right? So I guess we'll let it stand for now until there's a better answer we can give you.
All right. We'll just pay it. The, uh, the, uh, the other deal is the fax lines. Um, there seems to be, um, we've got two machines. One of them is in the, uh, dispatch center, the other is in the admin side of the building. And, uh, with the new phone system, we had to buy, and I guess there's a fee to, uh, run these two fax machines unless they go to a email. And, uh, of course, that, that, that doesn't work for us going to the email. And we've bought a couple of, uh, components that have to hook up to the fax machines to, so they'll work with the new phone system. And then there's a, there's a fee with those. And, um, we'll, uh, I, I guess we'll pay the fee. I, I don't know if that's come from your office, Laura, or where that's coming from, but the, uh, we can't, it, it won't work for us to go to a email line. We would have to have an email for everybody in the place that can't hook up to the machines. Does, does that make sense to you? Correct. Then all the faxes come to that machine and then like all the deputies just go up. Carrie pulls them off at the one machine and then anybody that gets a fax on that side of the building just gets it from her. And then on the dispatch, it's the same way. We get warrants that come from all over the country. And, you know, so they, they put them into the, uh, computer system, I guess, to say, so the deputies know that that warrant has showed up, that it's viable. And, um, it just wouldn't work to have a, a separate email. You know, we, it just can't go to all those emails. It's got to go to one or to one, to that one machine.
So, so here's the problem. There's, there's some of them that need to be covered. And, and when it was told to us, we were in the pressure to not do it this month. And so what we did was at the point of 22, we don't invite you to go once and you have to return. And if it were possible, there would not be a problem to use a forty bucks call. But there's not going to be one. So we're not going to have that money in that telephone line to uncover all the additional because it's not for you. There's not every department that have that. Um, so it's either it's up to the commissioner or someone that they want to go get covered through their, their budget. If I matter and they ask counsel for more or to insist that the department's cover it this year and then he address it in twenty one three months.
Oh, I, the, the way I understood, it's a hundred and something a month. Does that sound right?
It's, uh, according to what Laura given me earlier, it's like fifteen dollars per month for printer. But then the actual setup is two hundred and thirty nine dollars. Get it to do what you wanted to. So at this point, we would probably, we'll take this, uh, concern at our joint station to the council. See if they want to transfer funds or, uh, just to get us through this year and then have them set it up in your budget for next.
Uh, uh, whatever you guys want to do with that, I, you know, I, I just wanted you to know why we had to have it the way it is. It can't go to, to the generic email because then everybody would have to try to check that.
Yep.
Um, I can guarantee you stuff's gonna get.
We will try and, uh, get it covered one way or the other, you know, for the year and then look at a budget. Have, uh, people, different departments put in their budget for next year. Okay?
All right. Thanks.
Okay, Gary is here to speak for the person that didn't show up.
Well, yeah, Jeff, uh, it's not that he did not show up, uh, we're waiting on our, uh, bridge inspection to be approved for our contract negotiation, so, uh, end dots will find, uh, backup with this process. So we won't be here today and I'm hoping, uh, next month I get an ult end dot today. But I did have one other thing, uh, the last two years with the COVID, uh, Etnor that makes our distributor truck and our chip box has a, uh, mechanics or training school. It's in Oregon, Illinois. And it is, uh, this Thurs- Wednesday and Thursday, and I was wondering, I'd like to send my mechanic and my two operators. We have a brand new chip box that's a year old and we wanted to get a new distributor. This is where they make both pieces of equipment. It's at their factory in Oregon. I think it'd be very beneficial. We wanted to last year, but they did not have the schooling last year because of COVID. And I was wanting to see if I could, uh, send my three, uh, people to this class. I had to talk to somebody that had it last week and they said it's a very, very good class. And I know in the past they used to send, uh, two to three guys to it, I believe, every year when they had it.
Okay. Just a one day deal?
No, it's two days. It's Wednesday and Thursday.
So you'd be covering the overnight and all that with your department?
Yeah, through our department. Everything's covered through our department.
I'd, I'd make a motion to, uh, approve Gary's department sending three people to this schooling. And move and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
And, uh, is Benjamin Knapp in the audience? Wireless? And we're down to approving the claims and payroll, number fifteen then. Okay, okay. I got pay period five. Okay, been moved and seconded to approve the claims and payroll. All in favor, say aye. Prove and sign the regularization minutes for March seventh, twenty twenty-two. Need a motion to approve? Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Agenda. That is just, uh, one signature needed. Laura has given me the information this morning. It just needs double checked. It's our fixed acts, asks, assets inventory. So, uh, I will be checking that and, uh, paying off. You have item four, four con- uh, three conference requests from the auditor Cheyenne Zellers to attend the, uh, sales tax seminar on March twenty-fifth. And that would be this Friday, right? Laura to attend the auditor's spring conference, April twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, Indy. And the treasurer, Teresa Bryant, to attend the County Treasurers Association Annual Conference. That is in August, the third and fourth at Flick. So we have a motion to approve those conference requests. Moved and seconded to approve the conference request. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. And item five on the agenda, we have the PTA BOA reappointments of Rita Carpenter and David Amner, Ambers. Okay. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion on those appointments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. We have, uh, some discussion items we've added to, uh, the agenda. Uh, one of the major ones being the, uh, parking lot. Maurice has been working with different individuals to, uh, look at the parking situation around the courthouse and justice center. Yes, now and after the completion of the project. So Maurice?
Okay, um, so first they would like to discuss here is this, uh, J C parking lot proposal, which would be the west lot. Um, and, um, I would like to, uh, before the justice center is complete, I would like to see the updates done to the west lot. They're both used or friendly and match the professionalism of the, of the, of the building. Um, and so, um, first, the outside is approximately seventy-five feet by one hundred and twenty feet. So we have nine gallons square feet there approximately. Um, and, um, I would like to see it resurfaced with hop mix if that is a, uh, a possibility. And, uh, so Gary, would you be able to talk about that a little bit about what your thoughts are there on that?
Well, you and I have talked Maurice, and on that west lot, uh, I think we also discussed the, the east lot also that, that basically is the parking lot. I, I would say the best thing to do would be trying to get someone, uh, that's going to be good in the hop mixing in town. I believe Brad has, uh, one of the companies that's going to be doing some work in town here in the next, in the next month possibly.
Yes.
So, and, and I don't know if that can be done at that time, but, uh, it might be such a pain to quote both projects or, you know, I don't know. That would be something to check in.
And which company is going to be working in that?
I believe it's called Cobblestone.
Okay.
They're gonna be the one that's gonna cut our main street hill down and move down to the, uh, footbridge.
Okay.
Uh, they ought to be here in one to two months.
Okay.
To get that done, you know, when contracts are, they're in town.
Yes.
It's a lot cheaper if they don't have to, you know, that to do so.
Right. And then, um, to paint that, is it called painting or striping? Sorry, striping?
Striping.
Striping, um, what's, who can we get to do that?
I can get some checks. I mean, there's multiple different companies that, that stripe lines.
Okay, we're getting close to do that. Okay. Should we have that sort of managed or, or, uh, engineer to see how it's the most user friendly as far as, uh, straight lines or angle? Or can someone who's striped help us with that?
Yeah, we have, maybe I can work with Brad or something on, somebody on how. The biggest thing too, we've talked on where our, the county's property line is for on that parking lot.
Yeah. And, and, and Brandon, do you know where the flag is, um, against, uh, market street? Is that where the property line is?
Oh, that looks like the telephone, telephone bolt to ground.
Yeah.
It, it looks like there's a property market there, but I, I haven't had it checked on.
Okay. And, um, so, and what are your thoughts, Brandon? You had mentioned that one time we might want to go up to your building on, um, asphalt. Would mean that would be a, an opportunity at that time.
Yeah, just to kind of bring you up to speed, I thought you, a lot of times when you do a project, the, the more square footage, sometimes the cheaper it gets. And I thought, like, I do my project at the same time you guys do yours, that maybe that could benefit most of us.
Yeah, and it also would make sure it made it look nice. And, uh, okay, and then lighting, um, on the west lot, there's probably enough lighting, but on the dirt lot or the gravel lot that's now being used as a storage, we might need more lighting there. We could, uh, talk about that. Uh, okay, so if we move to that west lot that we're now, I, I call that a gravel storage lot. We have the, uh, that we would probably move and I know that, uh, we need somebody to help move those. Mike and Val appear to help move those. Um, and then we want to, uh, get the base ready for that. And, uh, Gary, as far as the base, um, do you know how much of the base is all? It looks like it's fairly solid.
Uh, I really don't know. I guess the biggest thing is when the Brad's company that's coming in, it'd be nice to know if they could come down and take a look and see what, if this project is going to be added into what the town is doing.
Okay.
Where, you know, maybe their ideas will all with. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. I, I would want to make sure with the black coffee company that's going to do it, that, uh,
It would have a, adequate.
I'm telling you right now, it should be expensive.
Okay, the asphalting part will be or the base?
The asphalt.
Okay.
Well, there's a basement there too, right? Is that, well, I do kids, they're retiring on the floor. We just told them we need to make sure it's compact as well.
Yeah.
Been twenty years.
I know you and I saw that, uh, that lead or that like a.
Uh, footer.
Footer around the outside on like the west side.
Yeah.
The south side, I believe.
Yeah.
A footer there.
That looks like a good place to stop. It's definitely on our property. Yeah, and that looks like a good place to stop. And then, uh, this would be a question for, for Brad. Uh, does there need to be a sidewalk along Jefferson Street? Um, there's not one at this time.
Yeah, it would be a good time to put one in because, you know, we put that splash pad inline here and we do have, you know, access to that from there. So it would be a good time.
Okay.
That could be something, you know, we can look at our sidewalk program, see what we've got available to do also.
Okay. Which side would be ideal to be, to be on? The south or north side or I guess?
Probably the south.
Probably the south, okay.
That would be the best.
All right.
I think you've got room. There's plenty of room to put one in through there.
Yeah.
For the corner.
Yes.
Maurice, I think your seventy-five foot measurement actually already includes part of their right away.
I think it does too. Yeah.
But that, you know, that might break that and set those spots back a little bit on that, uh, east parking lot too. If that sidewalk continued through.
Yeah.
So we, we can look into that. I mean, it's not that much to do.
Okay. And then ideally, uh, the alley, everyone knows are paved, the alley between the two lots, um, that would be ideal. That part could be paved as well.
It, yeah, that would be best if it was all paved through at the same time. It's going to last a lot longer. And, you know, that could be striped to, you know, dedicate where the alley is pretty easily.
Okay. And then if there was, what about adding lighting? Because I know in our west lot, there's not much lighting down there.
I'll, I'll get what's done. Our electric supervisor. We'll see what could be done. There shouldn't be any problems with lighting.
Okay. And, uh, and then the last thing on that one is an ordinance, uh, for county business only, I think would be beneficial. It seems like there are consensus is that that is needed for county business owners only. And what we would do is, um, probably during April, one of those meetings is, uh, vote on that, uh, to say, uh, to make sure what we wanted to say. I believe it's already drafted, ready. And then as we, so where do we go from here on that as far as what's the next step? Uh, would we need to get a quote from Cobblestone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be your first step. I'll, I'll touch base with them, see if they're going to be coming in town before they start the project that they're doing for us. And how much of the work as far as, you know, they can run over and look at that. Yeah, they're going to be doing some next to maybe work. I mean, if they're going to be the contractor of this lane and the optics.
Yeah.
They're, they're all, they would probably be doing the majority of all, but you know, as far as getting the, the left level and out. I mean, if they're doing that work, they're probably a funeral home, I believe.
Yes. Okay. All right. So, yeah, I can sure make contact with them as soon as possible and then we'll see what that quote is on that. Um, and if that's, uh, as a second option would be that possibly millions, uh, would be, would be a second option would be use millions on that. Yes. If there's, uh, price was, uh, something that we could work with. And, uh, so now if we switch to, uh, this would be a whole different, uh, parking topic. If we switch to the courthouse, um, items for discussion is discussion is, um, retaining wall, um, where, um, that need, needs some work. It appears that it needs moved. Uh, to do what we would like to do. And the, the retaining wall appears to be crumbling and not salvageable. And, uh, so the question would be is on, uh, main street, we would need six more feet of the currently law to put our sidewalk and then there would be plenty of parking for angle parking. And, um, how many more spots would we gain there by doing that, Brad?
Yeah, the way it sits now, if you leave the mailbox drop off where it is, you're going to gain five spots.
Okay.
You currently have eleven. You would jump up to sixteen spots. Uh, it, I guess what I had figured on that, if the sidewalk's ten and a half foot wide now, uh, you really need to keep it six foot due to, you know, when vehicles angle park and they pull up, their bumper is maybe a couple of foot over that. You need to leave your three foot for ADA compliance. So, uh, you'd have to move that wall six foot in.
Okay.
And, and drop the sidewalk down to, uh, to six foot and that would leave you the exact distance that we have on all the other angle parking in town from the sidewalk or from the curb to where the back of a vehicle would normally be. Uh, you know, I, I guess I had an idea too. I don't know why the mail drop off box is there. Uh, we're, we've got our project that we're going to be doing downtown, our lighting project next year, um, our end dot project. Uh, you know, we're going to put all new decorative street lights, new sidewalks. Uh, I think we're going to have a couple of bump outs on a couple of the corners. At that point, that mailbox could be taken down there and that'd be a perfect location for an ADA parking. It would cut that down and you're still probably going to gain, because that spot's like thirty foot across there. So you, you would have enough room for a van accessible ADA and probably another parking spot, an additional. So.
Yeah, it sounds good.
I'm, I'm not sure if that is ideal spot for the ADA. I mean, either way the math works out, but unless we take out these stairs entirely on the north end, which doesn't seem to get, have a lot of traction as an idea, the ramp is probably going to be off center to one side or another.
Yeah, you're, you're going to have to have it sloped.
Well, yeah.
You're going to have to have twenty foot of slope.
Right. So.
By the time.
I mean.
So it'll be behind.
It'll have to.
By fall.
Right. You know, but what I'm saying is that the spots will probably come so that the parking spots are as close to where that ramp comes out as possible. They'll probably have to be east of that.
Yeah, and you can move those spots wherever you want to put them, however you stripe it or we stripe it or however that goes.
So what would be some other, uh, topics as far as, uh, drainage?
Uh, you know, we'll have to take some elevation shots if, if it seems like we're going to need some drainage removal. You know, we're going to, some of that's going to be taken away anyway. It's a perfect time. There is storm sewer there, so there is access to putting stormwater in.
Okay. And so if it were, if we did decide to, uh, add parking and modernize the landscaping, um, Greg, what are your thoughts on, could that be done without a wall?
So theoretically, it could be done without a wall. If you take into account like full county's courthouse, you know, for the aesthetics of that, they slope the grass back towards the sidewalk. And it does look more welcoming that way. However, the courthouse does sit up quite a bit and you would require quite a bit of, uh, excavating for great work there to have the proper slope. Um, the wall, yes, the wall is, it's old. It's hard to ballpark a little bit. Could it be fixed? Potentially. Uh, there's a cost with everything. You know, to a grade, like we talked about sod back to get the slope for grass up to the sidewalk, you really wouldn't need a wall. However, to do that, probably you can probably do it around the entire courthouse to make it, uh, blend. And I know you guys are talking about modernizing more of the courthouse appearance and stuff. Um, there's other ways walls can be done with like retaining wall blocks. If you look at what there is now, you know, it's been there quite a while. It, it's obviously good material. It's lasted this long. You know, to go in and redo it, you're going to get that many X nine years out of that as well.
Yeah.
So that, that would be my opinion.
And what we could do is at the, at the front corner by, um, uh, Main and US thirty-five is we could leave some of the, uh, original wall there, um, redo that and, um, leave that there by the memorial. So that could be a, that could be a possibility. Uh, just, just an idea. Yes.
Would it be, would it be out of the, out of the, um, possibility to just take that lawn down to street level area and bring that with all or anything?
That would be probably a landscaping question. Um, what are, did you hear the question, Greg?
Yeah, so Laura said something about taking it pretty much down to street level and go like a lawn at a house. Um, the issue you could have with that is there are a lot of trees there. I mean, obviously those can be replaced. But then again, what would that look like up to the courthouse? You know, the courthouse still has a foundation of its own. And that, that's just something for an engineer to look at and see if that could be done. And you, you could also, too, the wall that's currently there wouldn't necessarily have to be as, if it were to be replaced as tall as what it is. Um, you know, we could still do some slope. if it were to be replaced as tall as what it is, um, you know, we could still do some slope work, whether it's a four curve or, you know, even half the size. It, it just, options for different appearances.
Now, on the plane line, uh, you know, I'm not sure the best time, timeframe, timeline on this. Uh, I know that one thing that, uh, I've been talking with John Allen this morning is that when, uh, JC is finished, that, um, Meridian Street will remain closed for construction. Now, uh, I believe the Sally Court, uh, will be opened back up, but that'll remain closed until the courthouse is finished. So this is why I feel it's really important that we get this west lot finished and then, uh, continue discussions on, uh, because the need's there now, even with the courthouse is vacant, uh, for reconstruction. That, that need is there now for this. Now is the plan to try to get this, uh, finished up.
Reese, I've got one thing.
Sure.
I, I have gotten several calls with, whether it's town businesses complaining a little bit about the parking now. There, you know, a lot of employees market. There's not a lot of parking right now. And, you know, that, that's what goes back to what you and I talked about with the parking lot that's, uh, west of the jail. It, it's not utilized because it's not really
User friendly.
Really knows where to go in and park in it.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we've got the town parking lot that's a little further away.
Yeah.
Come utilized. Um, I think we make that parking lot, you know, a little bigger, you said, on the west side of the alley.
Yes.
And, and drive to give them a place to park right there. I think people will use it. And, uh, there's just not a lot of parking right now.
Yeah. I would, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, when we have, uh, courts or, or, like, trials, um, it's a place for them to go. We're gonna have to realize that that's where they can find parking. And that's gonna be a great resource.
Yeah, need it. Get it done, put some signage up, absolutely.
Yes. And then, um, so I, I feel that'll, yeah, that'll really help out and take, take the pressure off and, and like I mentioned, the need is now for that. Um, so, so the, the action list would be get a couple of cobblestone on the west lot and then, um, yes, I did have that seventy-five feet included part out to the edge of the road. Okay. So, yeah, it's a little bit less than that. Um, and then, uh, and then we would counsel and if, um, it seems to be cross, cross prohibitive, then we would look at, uh, millions, but it should be nice at the slot mix. Right, at last, there's a level five.
Brad, could there be a curb cut put in where that parking lot meets Franklin Street? Because what I'm thinking is that to maximize, to maximize parking there, probably better off if it's one way.
One step.
So, well, in the, in the parking lot, so if we come in the parking lot off of Market Street, then have to come out via the alley or via
Logan Street.
Logan, sorry, Logan, not Franklin. So that, because, I mean, once you look how deep they, they, that parking spot's gonna be like one hundred and twenty on a sixty-six foot lot, you only got really sixteen, seventeen feet left for that drive that way.
Yeah.
Might be easier if it'd be one way.
And signage could do that very easily.
So I didn't know if you get to work with the town to get a curb cut if there's a one way to go out on those edges of Logan.
You know, there's, yeah, there's not one, so. Let's go. We need to get two loads, you know, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, uh, well, if we, if it came out, if there was an exit out on Logan Street, that would add more, because I was only remembering, uh, figuring we're leaving those trees and bushes at the west end in. And that would add a little more, that would add another twenty feet. And that's probably a good idea to go straight out on Logan rather than the curb and go out on the Jefferson. So that, that would make sense. So. Okay, any other discussion on, uh, parking?
I just know that as you and I have discussed.
So that the other commissioners are kept up speed. I've been working with indot to see about getting a few parking spots on the west side of US thirty-five. Uh, it's techni, even though people don't use it a lot, it's technically allowed on the east side. Go a block north, it's allowed. I've, I've got a follow-up with the guy because he didn't know if we or the town or indot had put that no parking sign there, but there is enough right of way that we, i- it's only maybe five more spots, but there is additional parking space there. So that is, you know, an interim step before we get the main street and potentially Market Street issues figured out.
What, what would we need to do with, uh, with the retaining wall? Do you think move for that?
For that, we're just looking at, um, parallel parking. I got a feeling indot's not gonna be interested in having people backing out into the highway.
I would agree.
But there are space for five between sidewalk and north and south sidewalks.
The only restriction now is that there's a no parking sign.
Right. And Mike, uh, indot wasn't sure if that was even theirs or if the county had put it there. And so he's supposed to be looking into that for me.
Guess we take it down, see who notices it. So we do need three quotes on this and, uh, I don't know who you normally get other quotes from, but, uh,
So I'll try to get three quotes, uh, before the next meeting or the next meeting. And then, uh, on the next meeting, we will be discussing the ordinance. And, uh, so, well, that's all I have on the parking. And I'm, I'm sure this will pay. Uh, monthly, if not week, weekly discussions could continue to keep things moving. That's our plan, is just to keep things moving along.
Would, would you like to meet out there sometime? We could take, put some paint on the ground.
I would do. That, that would be, that's a good idea.
If your idea, you know, sometimes it's easier to see it the way it's laid out.
Yes.
It'd also help your bidders when they come in. It would be exact, more exact, just to guess.
We have to get that written out so everybody's, you know, going the same time.
Okay, one last thing on that, uh, west lot, um, I'm, I'm confident that employees will use that. We get that's user friendly and patrons will use that. Uh, because when a lot's about half empty, I see jailers parking clear far in. So, uh, using it now, uh, as far west side, so I'm, I'm confident, uh, that, uh, that'll get you used, that'll get you likes. So there'll be, be a good, good resource.
Hey, Reese, thank you. And, uh, I believe we had a gentleman step in that was on our agenda. Okay.
Can I ask something before we get started?
Sure.
Thank you. I just want to give you a quick update on where we stand right now as far as COVID goes. Uh, Dr. Owen and I were invited to personally speak last Friday at the Governor's Health Commission. And so we did go down there in Mon, to Monticello and we spoke about, and some of our concerns about where we go from here and getting back to business as usual, that type of thing. So I just wanted to let you know that we did do that. We are down to taking appointments in our department now for those people who need to still be vaccinated. We are not going to be having, um, unless it ramps back up again, we're not going to be having all these clinics anymore. They're going to, people are gonna be able to call, make an appointment. Our public health nurse will be giving them vaccines um, that way. So we wanted to let you know that we, we are doing it like that. Uh, with that being said, the State Department of Health will start doing more meetings and more seminars for us as well. And one of the questions we had was, we do have upcoming seminars and to make those reservations, we put that, uh, hotel, those hotel rooms on our credit card. But two, uh, two of the ladies in my office will be come, in the next couple of months, be going to trainings where the hotel wants you to pay with a credit card. They do not want us to bring a check, like we've done in the past. Is there a county credit card that we can use? No? Okay, because obviously they don't wanna put two or three nights on their own card and have to wait a month to six weeks to get paid back. So we didn't know if there was any other way to do that or not. But if there's not a credit card, no, okay, that, that was our question, is we didn't know how to proceed. Ask. Okay, then it's, there's that. And just one more question, um, excuse me. We turned in a claim last week for thirty-five hundred dollars and I, I think that we need to get your approval for that. That was actually to buy gas cards for all of our, in, all of our volunteers that we've had since last October. And we, the state has given us that grant money to use for things like this, as we've been paying our nurses that have been coming in and some laptops and things like that. We do still have money left. And that was a suggestion, like we did last time, we also bought them gas cards from Goods and, uh, we like to purchase these from Family Express, but we did go in and go through however many, um, volunteers we have and some of them will get, and get a few gas, gas cards and some will only get one, but we did wanna purchase those in twenty dollar increments, but we wanted your permission to go ahead and do that. We would really, we couldn't have done any of our clinics without all these volunteers. We've had wonderful people. We've had over sixty-five volunteers. And so we would like to ask your permission to go ahead and have that claim go through for thirty-five hundred dollars and purchase the gas card. I've done that. I turned in a claim and a purchase order from Family Express last week.
We need to, uh, make a motion to approve this claim at this time, since it's a little bit more than what the department, uh, is, you know, for, so. We have a motion to approve this claim? Moving in second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, the discussion would be is, um, I know you mentioned what's Goods and now Family Express.
Mm-hmm.
What are your thoughts breaking that up with all of the?
Well, we went, we thought this time Family Express because there's three of them in the county. And since our volunteers came from all over, they would have a choice to go to any of the three gas stations to do that. So I could do that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you very much.
Benjamin?
All right, I guess I'm up. Good morning. I, uh, my name is Ben and I am from a company called Secure Tech Systems. I actually stopped in to see the sheriff last week and he suggested that I schedule with you guys. So we could talk about your courthouse security system. So the company I worked for, my boss in the early nineties come up with this concept of how do we eliminate a delay time between an emergency and our first responders reacting? Um, any other system out there that goes through a monitoring service that goes, you know, like your fire alarm system calls in, then they call your dispatcher, your dispatcher and determines if it's real or not, calls the fire department, fire department then ramps up. And the same goes for your security, especially in your situation where you do not have man security to even get into the courthouse. That creates a real difficult situation for an auditor or treasurer who does not have a security guard right there close. Granted, your, your sheriff's department, the jail is across the street. So when we were talking, when Sheriff and I were talking the other day, he, he'd said, well, yeah, I mean, we're in the middle of this renovation. We're moving to the courthouse. You know, we're moving the courthouse over into our building. We're moving some county offices into the courthouse doing renovations. Said now's the perfect time to think about this solution. So what we do is a very simple wireless panic button. Nobody else recreating this. This is a normal, just wireless panic button. So I'm not drilling any building holes. I'm not, you know, we're not, we're not defacing your beautiful historic facilities. But what I am doing is I'm, I'm giving them a button to press and then that button immediately comes in and it Of course, it's not just when I'm ready to do this up.
That's too late, we got shot.
Oh, that's, that's what does happen. Not sure why. I have a fucking, I want to, yeah, open my radio. Okay. I apologize for this. Usually that comes up quicker and usually I have a more warning time. So, so our button actually goes right to a radio. One second. If my box are up, hey, I can also flash slides as you can see in the back of the room. So if you have a situation where you have a bailiff who doesn't have an earpiece, then you need to have some kind of notification in the courtroom. So I'm not exactly sure why my radio does not work this morning. Um, other than the fact that the whole lot is set outside all night. Um, let's see if I can get it reset. No, that, 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 that's I remember the, I remember.
Wave plus system R.
Yeah. Sorry, I, I do apologize. Sometimes, uh, my, my little demo box, we change this everywhere we go. So this morning it wants to, it wants to behave like this and not, and not show you what it wants to do here.
I guess what Ben's doing is, oh, there we go. What I would say to you is that, uh, what intrigued me about his deal and that with me Friday was that it was wireless, that it goes to the radios, uh, instantaneously. It doesn't go to dispatch center, they come to police. It would go right to the police's radios. So we could program that to go to Winnebago PD's radios, our radios. And then the other thing I thought, uh, you know, if it works is that you could put it here. I know there's some other outline county spots that, um, you know, that would be easier to do than trying to wire like our panic buttons are now, so. Uh, that's all I know about it. I read the same thing that you guys got there. I haven't checked with any other places that Ben has put it. Like I said, we talked for about fifteen minutes, I think it was Friday. Or last week, so I said, to get on the, the agenda to speak with you guys, so. That's all I know about it. Uh, that's what intrigued me about it was that it was wireless and that it goes right to the first responders' radios.
Sorry, got it fixed. So, so I, I'll explain what it goes on. So the box you get, we actually, the sheriff would provide us with a radio. So my problem was my handset wasn't plugged all the way in to trigger the radio. So he provides us a radio, doesn't take a battery. We power the radio up so it never dies, never has problems. Everything's in a lock cabinet, can't be turned off, can't be changed. Um, box sits anywhere in the courthouse or anywhere in the county, as long as it's on the same computer network. So as he said, we can put buttons here. We can put buttons in any of your county facilities. So if the health department's down the road, that seems to be the place lately that everybody's kind of going, we need to, we need to be able to communicate a little bit quicker. So, so simply put, they hit their button and then that radio immediately keeps up. We can tell it to repeat a number of times. We can, uh, customize every message. So we can say exactly where that alarm is, right to their radios. I don't have to worry about dispatch deciphering what it is. And if you've ever heard a dispatch office in an emergency, it's not that clear. It's more like you know, so it, it just happens. You know, when you, when there's panic, there's hype and emotion. We are eliminating all of that. We are eliminating all of that. We're also eliminating any monitoring fees, any month-to-month cost. It's one-shot deal with us. You own it, you tell us how you want it to be programmed. You got a problem, call us. We can reprogram across the internet to you, come in and do it. Um we are a Texas-based company, my boss, and the company's in Texas. I was born and raised in Fort Wayne. I live in Alexandria. So I am local. I I am, I am your local guy, and I program and I do the technical work as well as the representative work in the solutions with the customer. So um the quote today is not for a quote. The quote is simply, you can give a ballpark idea of what you were looking at with a system of our type. Um you will never outgrow it, you put up to ten thousand devices on that. Um we can also monitor uh temperature in data rooms. We can monitor floods in basements of the courthouse where we would have, you know, potential for water. Um we can key the radio, we can not key the radio. We can send an email or a text, so if your IT department needs to have, you know, their IT closet monitored for higher-low temperature extremes, we should have texted off to them. Everything is supervised, so all of the devices, if they don't check in or they got a low battery, we send an email. Hey, low battery. Um it's a very simple solution. The only thing we're doing that nobody else is doing is we are directly connecting the deputies, the courthouse security, right here in a s- in one second, they're immediately getting notified, they can start doing. So we take that minute that it usually takes an alarm to get to a dispatcher, and we throw that away, and we make that response time right now.
Yeah. Okay, Benjamin, I think uh, you know, any of our final decisions is made on any type of security that's done in an executive session, more secretive as to what, how it's set up and so on. So we uh appreciate you for your time, we'll read through the information. And if we get to an executive session type situation where we're dealing with security, then we'll get in contact with you. Okay?
What are the pitfalls, Daniel, wrong with it?
Well, as as you saw, if it's not secure, the wire doesn't stay in there. Um we have an over ninety-nine percent uptime and success rate. Um so the biggest problem we have from customers is they take their buttons, they move it, they try to reuse the double-sided tape and it falls in the garbage can and disappears. That's that's the biggest problem we ever had. Um we have systems that my boss installed in nineteen ninety-five. They just work, they just run. And and the customers don't want to replace it. They're like, I don't need to replace it, it's been there, it's ran since nineteen ninety-five, whatever.
That was going to be a second question. What other counties do you have where we could?
Right here?
Yeah.
Lake County?
Okay.
LeFort?
Okay.
Chaffs County? Warren County? Um we are, we are in a lot of the counties around, um Clinton County. We're working up, we're working with Clinton County to put theirs to to add to that through them with a deputy change field. And then we are in, what other counties are right around here? Howard is not one of our counties. Um Nantucket County, we're probably in, we're we're in about sixty-five percent of the counties in state, Indiana. Um small to large, like Lake, Lake County is massive, that. Their complex is massive, and we are in parts of it, we're in part of their jail, their regular judges' courthouses and the regular auditor's office, and then we're not in places like the Commissioner's courtroom because they didn't want to for some reason. So, you know, it's just, it's a pick and choose, is you want to add places to it.
Well, uh, security is certainly a priority, and so we'll certainly consider it.
Yeah, our 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 uh our request is simply that you have the information as you're getting ready to go into your next phase of your renovation that you look, you look at adding the security and making those changes move to our rooms or whatever that that we need to consider to to add to with our with our other counties around the area that we uh that we are installing, so.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Just have one other thing here with uh Mike and Maurice both have been looking at the uh the uh property, the React building that sits out there. I'm just gonna kind of quickly breeze through some of these things that uh Kevin's office has found, that React people were under the assumption they were on a ninety-nine-year lease that uh could not be found. I think that uh the organization was dissolved in twenty thirteen, reestablished in twenty sixteen with no lease agreement. So when we look at selling this property, we have to make some adjustments on what we want to do. Uh whether we divide part of that property off. Um had uh a lot of people say that they uh use the React team, so uh I don't know whether we have to survey off a certain portion of that before we sell or whether we sell it to the React, kind of, they have the funding to do that. Uh but in any situation, we're gonna try and sort through that and uh keep the React team as a functioning organization. Uh I require a new lease from them, saying them may maintain the property and uh and so on. So that's kind of where we are with that deal. Thank Mike and Maurice for looking into that as well forward. Um any community comments? Any motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I got one. Keep this in thought, if you know you're gonna talk about maybe leveling that ground down a little bit of the courthouse. Any idea are the time capsules that are there, all marked and on a map somewhere so they could be put deeper or whatever?
There's a time capsule there in the northwest corner, right?
Uh there's several of them, I think.
Oh, is there? I I remember the one in the northwest.
Classes, I've put them in there in years. I could hurt.
Well, there was one buried, I think that was on the north side for the bicentennial in twenty sixteen. So there are at the very least two buried.
There were the drapes in front of me.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I can somewhat remember that.
Okay, thanks for the update.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll say.
Hold on, if ever say aye. Aye.